All right, it's six o'clock. I'd like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wausau School District. James Boucher?
Yes.
Jeff Lee?
Yes.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles? Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker? Present. All right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Agenda item five is the Indigenous Peoples' Day proclamation, which I will read. Executive Order Number 50, this is from the State of Wisconsin Office of the Governor relating to declaring Indigenous Peoples' Day. Whereas Native Americans have inhabited this continent since time immemorial, whereas Wisconsin is home to 11 federally recognized Native Nations and one federally unrecognized Nation, including Bad River Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Forest County Potawatomi, Ho-Chunk Nation, Makuta Raye Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Lactiflambo Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Menominee Indian Tribal of Wisconsin, Oneida Nation, Red Cliff Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, Mole Lake Sacagin Chipewa Community Band of Lake Superior Chipewa, St. Croix Chipewa Indians of Wisconsin, Stockbridge Muncie Community Band of Mohican Indians, and Brotherstown Indian Nation. Whereas throughout Wisconsin's history, Native American leaders such as Azhaigui Jigokue, Great Chief Buffalo, Chief Ashkosh, Chief Yellow Thunder, Walter Brissette, Truman Lowe, Ada Dear, Patty Lowe, and Ernie Stephens have defended Native rights and promoted sovereignty and prosperity for their people. Whereas the State of Wisconsin recognizes the historic, cultural, and contemporary significance of the Indigenous peoples of this region, without whom the building of the state and its cities would not have been possible. Whereas organizations like the Great Lakes Intertribal Council, Native American Tourism of Wisconsin, the American Indian Chamber of Commerce promote the sovereignty, resilience, cultural richness, and success of Native Americans. Whereas the sovereignty of Wisconsin's Native Nations is affirmed in Executive Order Number 18, wherein the State of Wisconsin recognized our unique legal relationship with Native Nations and directed cabinet agencies to engage Native Nations with the same respect accorded to other governments. Whereas since 1991, the passage of Wisconsin Act 31 of 1989, all public school districts and teacher training programs are required to provide instruction on the history, cultural, and tribal sovereignty of Wisconsin's 11 federally recognized American Indian nations and tribal communities. Whereas the State of Wisconsin has a responsibility to oppose the systematic racism toward Indigenous peoples in our state and in the United States, which perpetuates high rates of poverty and income inequality and exacerbates disproportionate health, education, and social outcomes. Whereas the State of Wisconsin is committed to closing the equity gap for Native Americans through policy and practices and ensuring access to opportunity for Native Americans and their communities. Whereas the State of Wisconsin recognizes the historical sacrifices of Indigenous peoples and greatly values the social, economic, and cultural contributions they make. And whereas Indigenous Peoples' Day was first proposed in 1977 by the International Conference on Discrimination Against the Indigenous Population in the Americas, a delegation sponsored by First Nations leaders in the United States. Now therefore I, Tony Evers, Governor of the State of Wisconsin, by the authority vested in me by the Constitution and the laws of the state hereby, number one, declare the second Monday in October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day in Wisconsin. Number two, recognize the immense importance of the Native Nations to this state and reaffirm the significance of the Native Nation's sovereignty, culture, and history. Number three, recommit to the state's efforts to promote the well-being and growth of Wisconsin's Native American communities. Number four, in addition to requirements under 1989 Wisconsin Act 31 mandating public school instruction on Wisconsin's Native Nations, strongly encourage Wisconsin schools and educators to use Indigenous Peoples' Day as an opportunity to engage students across the state on the importance of Native American history, culture, and tribal sovereignty. Number five, strongly encourage Wisconsin businesses, organizations, public institutions, and local governments to recognize and celebrate Indigenous peoples and cultivate strong relationships with Wisconsin Native Nations. Number six, strongly encourage all Wisconsinites to be in solidarity with Indigenous peoples throughout the state. So today is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. Raising High Achievers: Spotlight on Education. Well, where would you like to be? Would you like to sit in hall seat?
I'm happy to sneak in here if that's okay.
Okay, are you the only person?
I have a brochure for you. I know you have it in your board book, but there's nothing quite like looking at a brochure that's not put together. It just loses a little something.
My name is Tammy Steckbauer. I'm the gifted and talented coordinator for the school district. And I'm really happy to be here to share with you a cool program sponsored by the GT department, but it is not necessary to be identified GT to participate. So if you hear nothing of what I say, that's the most important message I want you to take away. This is for all elementary-aged parents of high-achieving kids. So if you open up the brochure, kind of the third page, asks a few questions. Are you a parent of a high-achieving elementary-age student? Do you have questions about topics such as perfectionism, anxiety, or ways to motivate and engage your youngster? Do you ever wish you had parents to connect with, to share your questions and concerns? Would you like a few more answers to go along with all of these questions? Well, we have the opportunity for you. So like I said, the GT department generated this idea to host four evenings, and those are on the second page. The first one happened already on the 19th. The next one is coming up on November 18th. And our goal was really, really simple, to provide an opportunity for parents to gather and learn from each other and network. We have lots of different ways we can network. But we wanted to go old-school and bring them back face-to-face. And so this opportunity was created to provide not only for the parents, but their high-achieving children. So how this looked on our first night was we met in the gym at Rib Mountain School, parents and kids, and then we sent the children off with three of the GT Learning Resource teachers to play games that would engage and interest high-achieving kids. And then myself, our school counselor Angie Pliska, who's also a rep on our GT department, and one of the GT teachers stayed with the parents. We rolled the dice a little bit here because we didn't know how many people would show. We had no idea how to prepare, but we had to prepare because it would be silly to just have everybody show up and wing it. So our school counselor had sent out a survey to our GT parents just to gather some information. What are the hot topics? So we could narrow it down a little bit. We picked the top three and then used that as our focus for the first night. So what we did was the school counselor came up with some very quick little video snippets just to kind of get the conversation started. So I think the first one was on social-emotional needs and emotional behavior and how sometimes for some kids, the intensity of their emotions can be a lot to handle, whether it be at home or at school or wherever. So she showed a little quick video, and then we posed a question. And again, we didn't know who the audience would be, so if we had an audience full of people who love to talk in a large group, we were golden. If we didn't, crickets would soon be heard. And so we did visit a little bit, and then that topic ran its course. The crickets were heard, and so we went on to topic two and did the same thing. We ran into a tiny tech issue, which happened to be sort of a happy accident because we didn't show our third video and we broke out and gave people a chance to start networking sooner. I have to give credit for Angie Pliska. She prepared a ton of resources for parents. Again, we didn't know who would come and what they would want. So picture one wall of our gym full of Chromebooks, all logged into her It's Learning page where she had tons of parent resources. Another wall where we had iPads with headphones and she had it geared up to little quick videos people could actually listen to right there that evening. And then for us, for our old-school, and I'm smiling at Mr. Boucher, but we had some grab-and-take articles that we printed. And you know, if that's the way you wanted to take something with you, you could. And then, of course, there were all of us. Our goal was, and we said, you know, maybe none of us has all the answers, but together someone in this room probably, you know, has the answer, has an inkling. And because we're in the GT department does not mean we have all of the answers. So again, we wanted parents to network and to meet other people. And my message to them was, you know, we don't want you to be alone or feel alone because you're not alone. But it can be hard for parents of either end. My child is struggling at home. Hard to talk about that with others and get people to share what works for you. It's equally difficult if you've got a high achiever at home. If you say out loud, "Oh, my child is so bored in school. Everything is so easy." It's harder to maybe find a set of ears who can relate to how you're feeling. And so again, we wanted to be able to meet everyone's needs. Our school secretary, GT secretary, did a ton of work behind the scenes. We wanted to really remove every barrier we could, so we even offered childcare. We did ask parents to RSVP for the childcare portion because that could be tricky. Key club advisor Monica Bornson and two of her key club kids from West, Claire Goutala and Elizabeth Berger, who showed up and helped provide childcare for the youngsters who weren't of school age. We had 33 parents attend, representing nine elementary schools in Wausau. We had 25 high-achieving students. Admittedly, some of those kids were identified and some of them were not, but may have been siblings of those who were there. And so a wonderful event. We asked for a little bit of feedback from them because again, we didn't know, we don't know what we don't know. So I said, "If this is totally awful, please tell us because we're going to do this three more times and we want to do a better job." And so parents were pretty straightforward. A couple of them talked about, "Boy, the big group environment, I don't necessarily love that." If we could, you know, make it a little more intimate and small groups. So we're going to try to figure out a way to still be prepared for a large group, but also to maybe provide for smaller conversations. Again, we wanted everybody to benefit. And you didn't have to come to all four. You can come to the ones you want. And we're going to ebb and flow. And my goals were pretty small. I thought if we can help one parent, if one parent leaves here feeling better about things, that's a successful evening. The other takeaway I had was that when you have the right people up front, and I'm speaking about Angie Pliska, our school counselor, social-emotional learning, she's also a parent. Everything she talked about was right in her wheelhouse and it made sense. And she was the absolute right person to deliver and kind of lead those conversations. So I had one parent in the comments say, "I learned, I got my question answered and I didn't even think that was something we were going to talk about tonight." So they left hopefully more than satisfied. So again, a program that the GT staff generated. The idea, I believe, came from, and I don't know if this exists anymore, a program called FAST, Families and Schools Together, is where the idea kind of was born. And that program really was about bringing parents and their children together. And this is just a little bit different, but that's where the idea came from. And we have, of course, a strategic plan in our department. We are trying to dig our way through. And networking was part of one of the goals. And so this was one of the solutions that was offered. I think it was a pretty great night, so.
I think this is great, Tammy. My only question would be on the participation or the participants. You said that it was open essentially to anyone, really, right? It wasn't just...
P5 was our parameter. And just if you have a high-achieving child, however you define that?
Well, and that's kind of where I'm going is what was the rationale for not keeping it at those that were identified as GT? Because you know that what your population is there? Because what I think of my child as a high achiever is going to be very different from what someone else may feel.
Right. Except you might have questions about your child. The person next to you is going to maybe have questions similar-ish. You know, if your kid's not happy at home, right, that's the issue. If they're struggling in whatever way, that, I mean, that's the real root of it. We didn't want it to be a club, to be really, we didn't want it to be, "You can't come if you're not this." We wanted it to be, "If you have questions or worries, we're not going to define it through, you know, through an identification process. You come." That's, so really that was kind of the thinking. And also for people to network and, you know, find whoever works for you in terms of a support system.
So I've heard we've kind of done something similar in middle schools where there's not necessarily just GT courses. They're open to whomever. And that's probably too strong of a word. But I just want to, I get a feeling like we're almost being overly cautious on identifying and really focusing on these kids. Because of that, you know, we don't want it to perceive as a club or something like that. But I don't know that that's a bad thing. Am I reading that wrong or are we just kind of opening up the...
Again, our interest was networking and helping parents, you know, gain answers, share resources, whether they be online or, you know, face-to-face. And it didn't matter to us if you are a GT student, a talent pool student. That wasn't the point. The point was if you have questions and concerns and you want some help, we want to help you. And then, like I said, we have the school counselor, who that's her wheelhouse. And then you bring the GT staff in where, you know, the high-achieving piece, that's their wheelhouse. So it was really an effort to just be inclusive of all parents.
So my question, Tammy, would be that basically what you were trying to do is to answer questions from parents because parents always want to know, "Well, why wasn't my student a GT student?" You know, maybe they're missing something, so I can ask that question. So basically, it's an open Q and A, correct, for parents?
And so like I said, we stopped a little bit earlier than we were planning to, but it ended up being a good thing because I had a line of people up near me. I know then, once the children were brought back into the gym to be back with their parents, the GT teachers, of course, came with them. And so that was a chance for parents to, you know, go and speak. And I did field some of those questions. I had someone with a little one in tow, I'm going to guess two years old. And Dad was asking me questions about, "What should we be doing now to get ready for GT and kindergarten?" You know, so there were all kinds of questions.
Which as a secondary principle for many years, I would be thinking, yes. Because as much as we can accelerate students at the lower level to the middle school level, to the high school level, now we're preparing students for the AP, the IB programs and answering a lot of questions as well as blocking. I think it's great when you can have a Q and A because so many parents do have questions and sometimes they just don't know where to ask the questions to get the answers. And that's my take on it. It sounds like a good idea.
All right, thanks, Tammy.
You're welcome.
All right, Agenda Item Seven, Public and Student Comment.
The sound effects, sorry.
All right, I'm ready, okay? All right, so we have one individual for public comment. So just as a reminder, comments shall be limited to no more than five minutes. Speakers shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Speakers bear the personal risk if anything he or she says during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. So with that, I will call Tom McCormick.
Jane, I won't try to get tied up that kid.
Tom, if you could just state your name and address and topic, and then Cassie will have the minutes for you.
Well, I might go a few minutes over, Cassie. I'm Tom McCormick. I live at 1015 Broadway in Wausau. I'm here to talk about parent-teacher conferences and add on a four hours this year and four hours next year. But I want to kind of Oreo cookie some things because I've been here, this is my third time speaking to you since April, mostly about morale. And I believe this is about morale as well tonight. And there have been some really good things done. So kind of a two-step forward kind of approach. Having the bereavement leave redefined, eliminating credentialing, making sure that, you know, we're trying to balance home and work-life experiences. We're over the moon about the single lane pay schedule that's going to go into effect next year as well. But there's been some negative things, and I don't want to be a drum here, but it is an Oreo cookie, so bear with me. You know, the insurance changes were significantly affected. Having the salary increase being imposed upon us, I don't think was exactly positive. But like I said earlier, I'm here tonight to talk about, in my opinion, a very simple change. And that's talking about our parent-teacher conference schedule and our calendar issue. I think the way the intended plan right now is very negative towards morale. And I believe it's very simple to fix it. I'm not going to get into a lot of details here, but presently we have 174 contact days. There are five days that are considered vacation days or holiday days. And then we have nine professional growth and development days in our calendar. And our contract calls for 189 versus 188. And this fall, we're going to 12 hours of parent-teacher conference. And at our school, we always had eight and then four in the spring for a total of 12. This year, it's 12 in the fall in addition to the four scheduled in the spring. And our school had to come up with four more hours to refine that 175th contact day and then four hours again next year. Now, I personally, and hopefully this, maybe I'm barking up a wrong tree, but I hope I'm, and if I'm mistaken, I apologize. But I just took a look at my own parent-teacher conferences at 3:30 this afternoon because we have the ability to look at who signs up and whatnot. At our first parent-teacher conference is on Thursday, and I have four conferences over four hours. Okay? A week from Wednesday, the 23rd, I'm at seven right now. Most of them from five to six at night till almost 7:30, right till the end. Prior to that, from 3:30 to 5:54, I have one. And then Monday, we have a long, lengthy day. It goes from, we're starting, I believe, at 12 and we're done at 7:30. And that's in three weeks from tonight. And that's hard on educators, first of all, to put a long day like that at the beginning of the week and now we've got to go teach four days. But I'm not, that's not, that's for future insight. But presently, I have one scheduled parent-teacher conference between 12 and 3:30. And then I have two right towards the end of the night. Okay, that's my 12 hours. Okay, and these scheduled appointments are 12 minutes. Okay, so I'm counting 14 at 12 minutes. It's a little over three hours, or under three hours, okay, in the scheduled 12. Now, it's going to change. There's going to be some added. But my point is this. Are we better off doing parent-teacher conferences or doing what I'm going to propose, which is add a date to the calendar, a contact date? I count up. When I'm teaching, I count up. We don't have enough days to teach our kids as it is. We got a sign over there about student achievement. We're here for student achievement. I like the parents, but let's add a 175th day. Most of my colleagues said add two. But let's not go and do eight additional hours where we're going to be sitting there twiddling our thumbs. Let's add a date. Simple, May 3rd is open on the calendar. That's that Friday, that's inclement weather. We're supposed to be done on June 5th. I think we were done on June 11th this past school year. Add a couple days that following week. Just add that and get rid of those eight hours and make our lives better and make our kids have an opportunity to be further educated because they have more time in the classroom more than you. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Next on the agenda is to approve the consent agenda. So I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to acknowledge the donations to the district, which is on the consent agenda. The list of donors to the district include Friends of Lee Webster Campaign, Middle Wisconsin Chefs Association, Rose Gaines, 3M, The Hanker Family, Andrea and Robert Blaubach, Kimberly and Justin Cruz-Eiribe, Douglas Edwards, M.D., and Heidi Schaefer Edwards, Highland Community Church Women's Ministry, Gridiron Club, Hetero Foundation, the McDonald Foundation, James and Jan Slaton, Greg Turanetti, and Roxanne Zaromski. So we would like to thank them for their donations to the district with great gratitude. All right, moving on to old and recurring business. The first item is the Whole Child, Whole Wausau Short Cycle Report. At the September Education Operations Committee meeting, Amy Arlen presented this short cycle report as a school board update on the current status and future plans in the area of service. We had three goals that were addressed. The first goal reads, "Marketing, Increase Awareness and Positive Perceptions of the District as Measured by Annual Increase of 5% in Facebook" district as measured by annual increase of 5% in Facebook fans and followers and an annual increase of 5% in positive media stories. The second goal addressed was programs and offerings, which is increase awareness of district programs and offerings and optimize experiences for students, families, staff, and the community as measured by a brief feedback tool with a baseline determined by June 2020. And the third goal addressed was partnerships. Attract and strengthen partnerships and optimize their mutual value as measured by quantitative and qualitative feedback at the conclusion of the partnership, or at least on an annual basis. All right, next, Neola Policy Review. And I believe that's just identifying that we have been going through the Neola policies, but we are not going through any at this meeting. Okay, new business. First, we have the School Forest Building Update. At the September Education Operations Committee meeting, Jerry Maney provided a brief update to the board on the title of the proposed new building at the Wausa School Forest. So I'm seeking a motion to approve of changing the name from the Wausa School Forest Lodge to the Environmental Learning Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next, the request to change graduation date and time at Wausa West for the 2020 graduation ceremony. The administration is requesting a change to the 2020 graduation date and time from Tuesday, May 26th at 7:30 PM to Friday, May 29th at 8:00 PM. This is due to the unusually high number of extracurricular conflicts that evening, and this was addressed in a previous Policy Resolution and Legislation Committee of the Whole. So we did go through this discussion in detail. I'm seeking a motion to approve to change the 2020 graduation date and time for Wausa West to Friday, May 29th, 2020 at 8:00 PM.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Was that a question?
I was waiting for, and I just sat it right in my head. All right, I guess I'm going to second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Graduation date is changed at Wausa West. Mark the calendars. All right, are there any committee updates or board referrals? All right, hearing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item 12. The first item is the Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. So would anyone like to highlight anything? There's a lot of stuff that's been included, but just wondering if anybody wanted to highlight anything extra special from that.
I'd just like to say it was a great event at Wausa West over the weekend with Powell, and I know you put a lot of work into it, Tricia, and knowing what it takes to put an event of that size together, I appreciate all the work you did. And it was well done, well attended, and I think there's enough videos out there in Facebook land to at least get an idea of what was going on. So take a look at some of it, and greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, thanks for that. Yeah, it was a lot of work. There were 200 dancers on the floor Saturday night, so they came from all over. We had 12 drums. It was really phenomenal, and yes, there were lots of Facebook videos, Facebook posts, and I was incredibly exhausted last night. Thank you for coming. I saw a number of board members there, so thank you very much. Okay, well, you know, I think I'll just share one thing, since we have done the PBL at Wausa East with last year's, being the last year of EGL, and then we went through a lot of discussion about PBL at Wausa East. I was invited to speak along with a community member, Dylan Prescott. There were some students that were very interested in learning about and researching Act 31. So I went to Mr. Oliver Burrow's class, and I thought it was going to be a 20-minute interview, left over 90 minutes later. But I was thrilled, I would have stayed even longer. I was glad that, you know, students were interested in the topic, and then they were actually at the Powell this weekend, too, taking videos and doing interviews with people. So I just thought I would share that that is something that's happening in that class over there at Wausa East. Okay, well, Superintendent Commentary, we can pass that. Presiding Officer Commentary, I'm just going to reference the Board Member Liaison District Activity Report and ask that this report be entered into the official record. With that, I am seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.